We'll get started here for tonight's City of Gilbert Regular Council Meeting. Today's date's July 23rd of '24, the time is 6:27 PM. Roll call. Councillor Pottingen here, Mayor Smith here, Councillor Skinsitch.
Here.
Councillors Pulis and Councillor Heitzman are not here tonight with notice. Also in attendance is interim Clerk Mike Skurbek, Attorney Lindsey, Matt Reed at a dream. Matt Reed, City Engineer, Public Works Director Sam Lotiger, and Campground Host Wendy. And we do have a quorum tonight. And if everybody would please stand and join us with their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And my understanding, we have one addition.
I have an addition. Just another check register, seven twenty-three through seven thirty-one. So a lot of things came in since the end of last week, so we're taking care of today. And then, I guess that's, that's all I have. I'm going to leave Brian's direction on the city charter department. And if you want to put Matt in, where would you like him to be on the business? Would he have been first, or I have D, or I have?
Yeah, we could probably bump him to D by doing first.
Okay. S E C I two plan.
Or, Mike, could we just have him under his public, or City Engineer comments?
Sure.
We could just do under Staff Report?
Perfect.
Motion to approve adding that check register.
I'll move.
One second.
Moved by Councillor Skinsitch, supported by Councillor Pottingen to add the check register. What was the numbers again?
Seven twenty-three through seven thirty-one.
Seven twenty-three through seven thirty-one.
It's in the pack. I think you can put them in.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And under the consent agenda, City Council minutes, invoices, previously approved projects, boards and commissions minutes, payments of bills, payroll upon proper audit.
I'll make that motion, approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councillor Pottingen to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Supported by Councillor Skinsitch. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And do we have public input tonight?
Mayor and council, I hate to do this, but I need to let you know that from the water board standing, standing by, Nick Opse, just designed, I understand, is in transit of leaving, so I'm asking sooner we get at least one more member on the board, somebody can conduct business and with the stuff going on with the water and field and the chimney and what have you, it's pretty important that we be able to operate as a forum at least. So the sooner we get somebody honored, the better. Give input to council advice, you know. Can you tell me the name of the gentleman? Nick Opse, Nick Opse.
O U K E.
He told me to retire, resign as of Tuesday. I don't know if he got the letter or not, but because I understand it's removed at some point soon.
Do you have any idea of potential?
I don't. I figured that's in your hands. Better not go there, but I can help to recruit it.
If you can think of anybody, yes, we'll, we'll announce it, but.
The sooner we can do this, the better.
Yep. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Connie Hallen. My power was recently shut off on July 18th, and I'm asking a consideration for the $150 reconnection fee. My mom passed away a few months ago. She also is a resident of Gilbert, so paying for both home bills and the funeral, I was a little bit behind on my city bill. I was in town in that day. I came in ten minutes after it was shut off, and I'm asking in consideration if I could take the $150 recondition fee refund. I'm sorry, I've never done this before. I've been a resident for 26 years, so I think it's weird.
And then we'll move on with the reports from the mayor and council. All I've got to report on was the Crawl for the Cure this last weekend was a pretty good success. From my understanding, it was one of the biggest crowd they had, over 500 participants. Tony and I went out to the OHV park and rode around and watched some of the Jeeps. If you've never done it and you have an ATV, I encourage you to go out there. It's amazing what they can do with those vehicles. It was fun. And the people with the Crawl for the Cure encourage you to go out there and partake in the activities. Some even offer for rides in their Jeeps, so next year when they come back, if you're interested, go check it out. It was fun. The dance Friday night was, there was a lot of people. I saw people from Boawabik, Gilbert, all around the area. It was a good crowd. And from my understanding, went without any concerns or issues, so that made a good night for the chief. Then Saturday night, we went to the banquet, and my understanding from that banquet, they rose in the ballpark of 60,000 plus for MS, which very successful. I believe, I heard they said so far in the 20 years that they've been coming, they've raised $1.6 million for multiple dyskerosis. That's a tongue twister. Anyway, MS. So it was a good weekend for the Crawl for the Cure. Wendy, how was the campground?
Actually, I talked to one of my seasonal campers today, and she said it was such a quiet weekend, it was so enjoyable. Everybody behaved themselves and, you know, other than, you know, starting engines and that kind of thing, there was no rowdiness, no loud music, no, nothing. So she said it was a very, very nice weekend. And I went to the street dance Friday night, and it was, it was fun. And I think they do a really good job. The only other thing that happened was we had an issue with smudge pots, but I'm going to have Jeff Ward put that in, brought for the cure information, that not to bring smudge pots. But other than that, everything else went wonderful.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I've, I've got. Councillor Pottingen?
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Skinsitch?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the reports from staff, from boards. Attorney Lindsey?
I think, Mayor, no formal report, but I will field questions if there are any from the House.
Thank you. And then we'll go with City Engineer Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought you were going to call me up as Thai teacher instead.
I almost did.
Get his report instead. Good evening, everyone. The only item that I want to discuss briefly is a carryover from the workshop, and that was the draft exhibit that was placed. I believe everybody has a copy of it. Sam and I have been working on trying to come up with a capital improvement plan for streets and infrastructure. I would say more Sam than me. He's primarily come up with, with the list. And so what we want to do is we're trying to finalize at least the initial scope for roads, streets and infrastructure that the city would like to see improvements done on in, say, the next five years. This is the list that we've come up with. We want to get some feedback. It doesn't have to necessarily be tonight. Obviously, this is the first time you guys may have seen this, so get some input from the council, and then ultimately we can finalize a scope, and then we can start putting some cost estimates together and prioritizing a list that'll help us get, from a budgeting standpoint, for the council the budget, as well as for us to look for some possible grant funding. So usually what they want to know is what are you going to do and how much is it going to cost? So that's really the step that we're at before we put any time into putting costs together and spending time doing things like that, getting a little more detailed. We want to make sure we have the list paired down. That's not to say that over the next five years that something couldn't change on this list, but at least it's something to start with. So I can certainly answer any questions. Maybe Sam's got more to add to that, I don't know, but at this point, I'll open it up to if anybody's got any questions for us.
My question would be, you know, we're looking at things that are complete rebuilds, and we're looking at things that are mill and overlays. As we look at these things, would there be a priority to get the mill and overlays done before the complete rebuild so that we don't have to do complete rebuilds there too? Or are there areas where complete rebuilds are the higher priority in the big picture? It'd be nice if we could help to prioritize these some.
Yeah, I think that'll be part of this process. We'll take a little closer look. If there's some areas where, for example, the sanitary sewer is really, they're having trouble getting flow to go through, these guys are maintaining it constantly, we would probably prioritize that. We met with the county today on Indiana Avenue to try to get some work done on that road soon, hopefully, at least some temporary fixes, so it's not so rough. So yes, we'll look at all of that and try to help prioritize and come up with a plan for the next few years. And then, of course, what Sam and I come up with, you guys may have some other thoughts as well, if you've heard from residents or whatnot, but that would be the plan.
I know, like I say, working with JPJ prior, these were still the same ones on our list. I really haven't changed anything. Brought Matt Reed in with S E H and kind of showed him around, same list. It's kind of, you know, our worst alleys and need sewer, and sewer work are more in the blue. Your mill and overlay ones are in the red. You know, we got Nebraska Avenue. That's probably our biggest street issue right now that needs some major attention, and that's from the alley intersection up towards the top of the hill, towards the park. And then it also included First Court there going up Nebraska. The other one I was looking at was Virginia Avenue. Virginia is, you know, spot, spot water, waterline stuff. And then, and then, you know, your curb and gutter and, and a mill job or, you know, subcut and doing all that, so. But yeah, this was a pretty good start to a list, and we want to make sure that council's kind of okay with it. And if you want to give us your feedback, maybe, you know, or me your feedback, and we can put something better together, you know, maybe for next month or for, you know, looking for the future. Maybe a couple year plan to get some infrastructure and some streets done.
On any of these streets that you haven't marked, is there any concerns with those, or is that something like in the tenure plan?
They're all concerns. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we never had a five-year plan, we never had a 10-year plan. It's just kind of what needs to be done right now.
Right, yeah.
You know? You know, it's, the blue ones are the worst ones, and that's where your infrastructure is. You know, the, the red ones are more your mill and overlay with maybe a little bit of storm sewer, where catch basin work stuff is just smaller stuff, but for the stuff that needs to be done, you know, the sewer is probably your priority, plus that's where you get your most funding from also, so your water and sewer side, so.
So any of these total reconstructs, are they in critical shape where pipes are broken in half or whatever, and you're not, you know? Or what shape are they in? Why are they?
You know, your, your water pipes aren't horrible. It's, it's more your sewer. Like I say, Nebraska Avenue is more your, the, the street just falling apart. The water and sewer infrastructure was done, I think, in the early eighties. Haven't had any issue with them. Sewer was done, I think, in the early nineties when they did some, some water work also. It's more just a mill and overlay on Nebraska, but Nebraska is, is the next street that needs to be done. That's kind of why it's in the blue. You know, it's just, it's, it's in really tough shape.
Yeah, it's listed as full reconstruct, so I was curious if that meant infrastructure also, but it doesn't.
No, no. And like I say, I'd clarify a lot of this stuff with Matt. When we were going over it, we were driving through, and it took about an hour, and we really needed to do it about a three-hour timeline, so, but yeah.
So some of the base underneath these streets isn't up to?
No, yeah, it would all need a subcut and everything, yep.
Foot or two or whatever it takes to?
Probably a couple feet on a subcut with some fabric and whatnot.
Yeah, that's, that's why it's listed as a full reconstruct, because it's not, it's not just a mill and overlay. It may not be infrastructure, but it's going to need, the road bed and then the road infrastructure itself is going to need to be fixed.
All right, any of these infrastructure?
Yeah. The alleys in particular.
The alleys in particular are infrastructure, yes.
Between Iowa and Wisconsin there?
Yeah. Those alleys, yes. Yep, those alleys, all the way, you know, from, so the Iowa 1-1 here up, the next one over would be Wisconsin up, and then Minnesota up to Summit is, is, those three alleys are in need of some, some repair.
I have a question, and maybe somebody can answer this. A couple of years ago, I know that the city got a grant from IRRB that alley infrastructure between Michigan and Minnesota, now that manager disappeared? What happened to that? Or how did that get placed where? Are you aware of it? The money was awarded by IRRB, and then you never went after it? Or I don't know what, but some, some question I have. Because I know IRRB awarded the money for that project, and it just disappeared. I know we're in financial space, but can somebody tell me what happened to that?
Is that, was that the project from Summit Street up to Kennedy Park?
No, it wasn't going anywhere. Was it happening for?
I don't think we had a match, so I, you know, we didn't have a, you know, IRRB isn't going to give you the whole funding.
Right.
And you had a match. And I don't think we had the match, so we didn't do nothing. Same with like the, the grant for the, the community center, you know, the bathrooms down there. We didn't have a match, we couldn't get total funding, so. But I can't remember if they, they awarded it to us or not. I know we put the application.
IRRB awarded that, I mean, the city, but you had to come up with a match.
Yeah, and I don't think we had a match. We didn't have one. You know, and that was like a.
Never panned off or what?
Yeah, we didn't have any, anything in the capital improvement project for a match, is from my understanding, so we never did it. But like I say, I can't remember.
I think that IRRB awarded it to the city, it should still be placed somewhere for something.
If we don't use it, they just absorb it.
Yeah.
So if we tell them we don't have the match, that money just goes away. They keep it.
Goes away.
We never got it, so.
We couldn't match.
Correct. Correct.
The IRRB is a reimbursement. It's not as if they wrote the city a check for $250,000 and it's in a bank someplace. It's, it's a reimbursement thing, so if the expenditures weren't incurred, incurred, you wouldn't have gotten the money.
Without proceeds, you don't get paid.
Right.
Looking at this, Sam, that alleyway, actually just up from Lille, from Summit Street in between Michigan and Minnesota, wasn't that whole alley done?
No, above Summit.
Above Summit?
Above Summit.
It's blue on here.
Yeah, like I say, we did, me and Matt did this.
It should be the lower?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, me and Matt did this with.
Two blocks, both blocks from the old curling club?
Summit down to Main Street.
All right, that's what I figured.
I think you say this is a preliminary project.
We didn't sit down and go over it piece by piece. We just kind of did it as a, you know, hundred-foot view. We wanted to bring it to council to make sure that you guys didn't have, want to change this before we started kind of stepping into the next step of the process and making sure you guys were okay with the streets we were looking at.
Might be great to do the road down to Orbegon and Nebraska, one year would be, whatever.
Well, just, just start somewhere.
That's part of the whole, whole thing too, is that's why it's outlined there, that whole campground road, but, you know, that's where we're trying to also, that's where that campground, that campground plan comes into effect, you know? Maybe there's some funding out there for, you know, entries into state parks or entries into a park or something like that. That's why that plan getting done is kind of a, it's not a big deal, but it's kind of, it helps. So for funding, for.
Funding.
For funding, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, that's also on there, so.
Well, that's a good start, I think.
Yeah, I think a very good start, and we got to keep it going. That's what IRRB wants, is the multimillion dollar project fund, so I'm sure this will cover that, and then some.
So, so then if Matt goes ahead with this, then what are we going to get? Blueprints of what should be done, or what?
No, I think the next steps will be for us to put together what we think it's going to take to, to do this project. This wouldn't be to the level of plans and specifications. This would be high-level cost estimates, so you have something to use again for budgeting during your budget cycles, as well as be able to apply for grants. We wouldn't probably, unless something became a, an emergency, we wouldn't start into this probably for, maybe next year, possibly, but even, got to try to get some funding in place first for some of it, so. That takes a little time, as you guys well know, so.
So you could get on the bonding schedule from this year, possibly, with some of this?
Yep. It's the thing, we got to have a game plan, and if you don't have a game plan, so this is a good start for you guys to come up with, to get the ball rolling.
You have to have a couple things in pop or easy, what do you want to do, and do you need someone?
Exactly.
It would be good to have in place for next year's direct expanding, because we didn't, weren't able to give them a project this year, so.
Yep. Exactly. I do have one more with this potential boat landing on the backside. Is that going to be paved from Masabi Bit's end all the way down, and then a paved parking lot?
Yeah, that was, what we had talked about, is trying to do something, that area back there looks like a real good spot to put a boat landing in, now that the one at the campground isn't very usable. Maybe that'll be usable again someday, but yeah, the intent there would be to pave the area that's gravel now, or the section of the road that's gravel now, and put some parking back in there and make an actual boat landing area down in there, so it would be, yes, it would be paved. That would be the plan. Maybe, maybe initially it's gravel, I don't know, depends on money, but.
Right.
It's going to be gravel to it though, isn't it?
No, if you come in off of 135, it'll be asphalt all the way or paved, because, yeah, that, it's paved right up to that, right before that first boat landing that goes down.
Yeah.
It's paved up to there, so then.
Off, which is wide off?
Yep, and then it goes to that right.
Okay. I didn't know that was paved that far. I've been back there for years.
Yeah, it's, it's nice, actually.
Did the, did the water go down in Orbegon? Have you been?
It's been the same. I, my marker, I check, it's, it hasn't come up and it hasn't gone down anymore, so hopefully they don't set off an explosive that's going to crack that barrier and it starts leaking again.
And, oh.
Yep. But yeah, I know, where I think, in my opinion, at that level where it's not going to go down anymore with them pumping.
We thought that before.
Yeah, right, right. Like I said, if it cracks and it starts leaking, but, and is there any way of keeping that separate, or is that going to be in the package together? Because obviously there's grants for parts and stuff, but.
We'll have it included as, in the whole package, but it'll all be, all of these, we'll, we'll set them up so they're broken out separately, so you can see individually what the estimate might be, and then that'll help us pick and choose what we want to do with how much money we have.
Perfect.
When you do your estimates, do you kind of do two, three-year advance inflation cost kind of, or is that how you do that?
Yeah, typically we drive it all for that.
Excellent. No, good job, guys. Thank you. Did you have anything else, Matt?
No.
Excellent. Move on to Public Works Operation Director Sam.
Let's say Wendy mentioned it, you mentioned that the Crawl for the Cure went on good. It's on like, I haven't touched base with anybody on spots, but I think.
They were, they were well marked. Wendy mentioned that, I believe Kelly was up from Minnesota Department of Health. Everything went good. I believe there was about 32 spots that were taken up out of about the 34 or 36 that I did mark out, so it was pretty busy, those, those extra spots, so. Everything that I know of went good. There was no garbage. Didn't have to go walk through fields or anything like that. It was all picked up. They, they did a really excellent job of picking up the garbage around the community, around the rec center in the fields where they were camping. There was no issues, so they did a good job on that.
The other, the other thing I got, I, last month, or actually a couple weeks ago, we were supposed to have a power outage, and we canceled it due to the heavy rains and whatnot. I believe that was in the end of June. I did reschedule it for the 13th of August, so starting the night of the 13th at 11:30, the power is going to go, is going to be out. And it's going to be out through 5:00 AM on the 14th. That's kind of what we, what I brought up to Minnesota Power, they're okay with it. So I kind of brought it up to Mike. Sounds like he's okay with it, Mayor. We're going to shoot for that day. If it rain, I, I don't know, so we, we did make a rain date of the 20th, so it would be one week later, same times. I would say it would have to be raining. I would say it would have to be raining, you know, pretty hard and storming pretty hard for us to cancel. If it's just misting, I think they'll still do it, but it's gotta be raining really, you know, it's gotta be a heavy rain. So, the 13th is the power outage starting at 11:30 PM running through 5:00 AM. Or maybe they'll get it fixed and put back together sooner and have the power on a little bit sooner, but just schedule for them.
Worst-case scenario?
Yeah.
Time frame?
Yep. So that's why they gave me five hours. And this is due to a switchgear, the switchgear that went bad, where it automatically transfers over from one feed to another. So they're putting a different one in, is what they're gonna be doing at the substation, so.
Was that the new switchgear that went to hell?
Uh, no, no. What, what happened is when we got our new substation, we used the old switchgear that was in place and, because it was, it wasn't that old, but Minnesota Power put that in, I would say, I would say like 2000, probably 14 to 16, somewhere in there, so. But I, and that's, that's what, one of the power outages where this spring, they were doing some work on the north end of town here and they went to go transfer it over while it got hung up in between and it didn't transfer over. So that's why it was out for what about a half an hour this spring. That was one of the issues, so. But yeah, we'll hand out some flyers to the residents and place it at some of the, some of the businesses, the post office, city hall here, and then community center, we'll be placing it, so.
Excellent. My understanding, there was one complaint from last time we posted it, the concern about people on oxygen.
Yeah.
What they can do.
I know, yeah, I, I don't know what they would do in any type of situation of a storm or anything like that.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have extra bottles on hand. I, I don't know.
But if, if we get the word out, hopefully they can take those measures.
I know Ty might have, Ty knows a couple of the people, or Chelsea knows a couple of the people. We'll knock on their doors and make sure they know, the ones that we know that, that are on oxygen with the city, so.
So is this gonna be put in the paper, the Hometown Focus also, or what?
I can put it in the paper if you, if the council would like, but...
Or it's the best place to advertise it, I don't know.
I mean, I could put it on the radio if you guys would like, but I mean, if you guys want it in the paper, that's no problem too. We could put it in Masabi. I don't have a problem with that. You know, run a couple Wednesday ads.
On their website.
Yeah. You know, Facebook pages. We got Facebook pages, police got one, city house got one. We could put it in there, so.
Put it out.
So, it'll, word'll get out, so.
Well, it did last time.
It did last time, yes. And actually, we got one more week of this time. I think I got, we did it in about two weeks last time. And I'll hand out flyers to the businesses so they know, which, most of the businesses, this last time, were pretty happy that we were doing it at night because it didn't, it didn't affect any of them, so, which was nice.
Exactly.
Yeah, I emailed all my seasonals so that they were aware and everyone, every camper that came in, I let them know at the time that this was going to happen, so they were all aware, so I wanted a problem at the campground.
Perfect. Oh, perfect.
Next on the list is, I'm gonna start fire hydrant flushing in the month of August here. Kind of in short staffed, it's nice to get the flushing done, so there might be some brown water coming through your, through your pipes or whatever when we're flushing hydrants. Just run your tap water a little bit, it'll clear out eventually and shut it off. On that, go down at the, and then we just recently ran into a issue down at the sewer plant here. Last week, one of the blowers had an issue. The guys have been, were doing an oil change, did the oil change, went back online, and I think with the, the cleaner oil, thinner oil, they went to start it up and it was actually, it ran for a little bit and then it shut down. So I had them let it cool it down. They, they went down there, looked at it. There is a little bit of issue with the blower bearing, or one of the bearings in the blower. You can roll the, roll the pulley a little bit and you can feel a rumble. We tried it again this week, turned it on, ran, ran for about 20 minutes and it shut right down again. Sounds like it's a bearing issue in the blower. It's about, as far as I know, it's $5,750 to, to fix it. We gotta ship it out to Aaron's, I think they're out of Illinois, and it's plus shipping, so I don't know, you know, it's something we need. I don't know, we're about a year out of warranty. I think it was five-year warranty, so the warranty ended in 2023, so. Just, I don't know, we've been doing the maintenance to it. They don't know what, what the issue is, don't know why. We've been putting the right oil, we've been doing everything right. You know, the last oil change, one prior to this one, the oil was pretty black, so I don't know if that was signs of a seal going or if it was just signs of getting too hot or what, but, you know. So we stepped up the oil changes to, between six months now is when they get an oil change instead of a year, so. But we went to go do the oil change and there's, there's an issue with it, so. Just letting the council know, we're gonna have $6,000 plus cost for getting that blower rebuilt.
Is that one out of three blowers?
Uh, one out of four.
One out of four?
Yep.
So you need three in line all the time?
Yeah, yeah. They put four down there, so we have three online right now. And we got it valves so we can adjust where, which, which is getting what feed, so. So we do have three now, right. And this one will be out of service. Hopefully we can get it back in a couple months is what.
So are the manufacturers that you're sending it to, the people that make them?
Yeah.
Maybe you could ask them why?
Well, that's what I'm hoping. I'm hoping once I, once they get it and look into it a little bit, what's the, what's the issue, what's going on. I'm gonna, I gotta talk to them. I didn't get a chance to call them today. I'm gonna call them tomorrow for sure and see if there's anything I can find out more, so he has more of a clue of what, what is going on, or I do.
And you're using the recommended oil?
Yeah, everything's recommended stuff. You know, like I say, they only recommend them, us changing it every year. Well, we're, we moved it to every six months just because they've been running a little bit harder, but Aaron said he didn't have an issue with how hard they're running or even the temperatures. We're seeing temperatures of 100 degrees and, you know, he wasn't concerned about that at all. You know, like he mentioned in one of our conversations on, online, that these things run out in the deserts, out in Nevada and whatever, at 100 and, 120, 130 degrees plus. Yeah, I don't know. The only other thing I got besides that is during one of the storms, the outside hockey rink, the end blew down, down by the campground. What are the thoughts of us shortening that outside rink up or even just possibly getting rid of it? Or, you know, what, what are, what is council's thoughts on that? I think the last two years, last year we didn't flood at all. I don't think the year before we flooded the outside rink. I think it's been, you know, over the last five years, it's kind of been off and on because of weather, because of issues and whatnot. But I don't see a lot of use out there. Are we doing, are we putting a lot of work in there for a little return with that outside rink? Now, if shortening up the rink instead of making it full length, that would help, that would save some costs or whatnot. It'd help, you know, snow blowing, flooding, water usage, but...
Is all that wood shot?
No, it's not. It's, it's not horribly shot. It's, you know, we were replacing them as they, as they go. You know, maybe some of the posts that, when they broke, I don't think those posts were actually in the ground. I make, I think they were like an L bracket laid on the ground and then maybe a couple stakes on each side driven down into the ground. I don't think it was actually post driven into the ground, holding those up, so. But I just was wondering what's council's thoughts are, if I shorten that up, or, or would you rather see it kept the same way it was, or, or are you guys thinking maybe it would be better just to get rid of it altogether? I mean, that's something we can talk about next meeting too. I mean, it doesn't have, doesn't have to do right now, but I just wanted to bring it up, you know. There's, you know, are we putting a lot of work into outside rink versus a little return on having people skate out there? I see most of the kids wait for the inside to get available and go on the inside, so.
What do you flood outside there? No? Is it just that, the big rink? Or do you do that small area? It used to be like the kiddie rink.
Yeah, and just the big area, just the, inside the boards. That's all we did outside. Yeah. We don't, we, oh, that hasn't been, that little kiddie rink hasn't probably been flooded since we were kids, so.
Okay.
Can we put on a work session next one and talk about it? Give it some thought and look at it?
Yeah. If the demand isn't there...
That doesn't make much sense.
Yeah, there's no point if you wasting your time if nobody's using it.
That's why I brought it up, but you know, if it was a disease or whatnot, it would be a new drain, you know, over the last, say, five, six years.
No demand.
Yeah. Usually there's volunteer groups and all this stuff that do the flooding, there's volunteers, you know, but we don't have that here. Gilbert.
I did a lot of the flooding on the outside. I haven't had a chance since my kids got older to call their floods.
Yeah. Yeah, we can have a further discussion on that.
Yeah. That is all I have.
I have one thing to ask you, Sam. I've been talking with Jeff Ward with the Crawl. He, earlier in the year, had mentioned that they wanted to look at cleaning up the backside of Orbegon. Some of the property is the DNR, so he's already working with that, but some of the city property, if you look at that first landing, there's a washer, dishwasher, clothes washer, some furniture and all this garbage. He had made mention if the city could help him with a dumpster or something. So I told him to get in, in touch with you and they decided to do that.
My thought on that is, I think if they want to do something, this is, this would be my two cents, instead of like hiring G-men to come in and, and put a dumpster out there, I think if we could make a spot where maybe these guys would have a couple trailers and their Jeeps or whatever and carry it to the spot, then I can just send our skidster and our dump truck out there and put the grapple on and we can load our, our skidster, whatever's in that pile right on the, right on the truck and haul it to the landfill. If they're willing to, to help us with that, I can make a little spot, hey, this is where we want it. Whatever weekend, I can, I can work with them on that. And then that's all we would have to do is go in and, and, you know, load it up and we can haul it away. You know, dumpster is gonna be, you know, a couple hundred, probably three, four hundred bucks to, to get a G-men dumpster out there, you know. Whereas, we would just have the tipping cost. I don't know if they were willing to pay for the dumpster, probably not, right? They were just...
Yeah, I, he just made mention of it again and I just said to reach out to you and you guys...
Okay. Well, I can talk to him too.
Bring it to council.
Yeah, I can talk to him too and if there is a spot like that, we'll just make a spot for them guys to drop it off there and, you know, I'll give them like a key to our spot up there and they can just, we can show them where it is and they can bring up, they can go up there, drop it off, and then we'll go up the next week and grab it and haul it to the dump. I think that'd be...
I'll reach out to them and let them know I...
That'd probably be the cheapest for us.
And then you guys can figure a plan, then bring it to council and give us the details. They do ride back there? Not so much. There's really not any trails, but they, during their breaks or whatever, they go sit down on the backside and they've seen all that trash, he said. And his outfit would just like to go in and clean it up. So, I told them to get in touch with Sam, to create whatever plan for the city property, but then you've got the state property back there and all the private property, I told them, you have to work that out with them.
Masabi Bit, yeah. So maybe if you talk to Masabi Bit, they might help out on the cleanup business.
Exactly.
Near their property, you know. They, they don't like it any better than anybody else, I'm sure.
Exactly. So it sounded like he was in the mix of working with those guys and, or trying to organize it. So I just said I'd talk to Sam and Sam can bring something to council, what, whatever they work on.
Especially them with the big equipment and the trucks and everything. They could make one trip to the dump and clean it all up and just charge the city or whatever for their time.
They're right there.
Yeah, they're right there, yeah.
So...
Yeah, this last time I was back there, drove up that side road, I saw that washer, dryer, whatever it was, and a sofa and all kinds of other garbage. It's just ridiculous what people...
That newer stuff that's there?
Yeah, that was the newer stuff.
Too bad we couldn't have cameras somewhere, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Trail cam or something to catch them.
I could talk to Ty and whatnot too. We got a couple.
Well, was that four years ago? We caught people back there dumping?
Yeah. I know there's address on one of them.
Yeah, that's sad.
It is, yeah.
Really sad. But, okay, anything else, Sam?
Nope.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Wendy. Campground O's.
Good evening, everybody. The police, we kind of talked about Crawford here. Sam didn't mention, both Kelly and me, and she stopped by my office. She said everything looked really good this year and liked the extra thousands were there. And everything looked good in the campground as well. So, one issue that I'm having and I'm thinking about getting an, ordering another doggy bag station and putting it out by the bench by the Masabi Trail. There are so many spots along the Masabi Trail on the campground side where people are just letting their dogs go and they're not picking it up. So I thought maybe if I put doggy bags out there, maybe some of them will start doing that, using the doggy bags, so.
One would hope...
Yeah.
That they'd do it.
Other than that, everything else is going great. So, that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. And we'll move on to Mike. Interim clerk?
I just want to thank everybody, Sam and his crew and the police and fire department and everybody who participated from Crawford here. They did a great job. There are a lot of people in town. Everybody kept out and went really well. For a small town to have an event this large, it takes everybody helping. I mean, they all did a really nice job.
That they did. That they did. And then we'll move on to the old business, establishment of personnel committee for matter of record. I have given that some thought and consideration in the selection of the committee. And what I've come up with is I would like myself and Councilor Polis to be the committee with Councilor Potenon as the alternate, if that's...
That's fine with me.
All right with you?
Right. But do, do we have a second reading of this though tonight?
There's no...
Brian, is there no?
Please explain it.
Didn't we have a second reading tonight though?
Yeah, so I think fire...
Yep. So I think by our charter, we've got to have a second reading and vote tonight, and then it's.
Yeah, then it's, then a thirty.
Made it a matter of record.
Right.
From our last.
Right. So this will be recorded as the second reading, then?
Yep, and then, and then it's voted to approve it.
Vote to approve it tonight?
Yeah.
And then thirty days it takes.
And then thirty, yeah.
Yep.
So we need a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the ordinance for establishing a personnel committee.
Motion by Councilor Potenon.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Skengich to approve the City Ordinance Number 31.25 Personnel Committee, the City of Gilbert, for the second reading. Right?
It would be acknowledgement of the second reading and the motion would be to actually approve it. That's the final outright motion.
And to approve it, okay. To approve the personnel committee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay, none. Motion carries three to zero.
Mayor, if I may, as a technical matter, if you'd like, you could make appointments to a personnel committee, it will be an ad hoc committee until this formally takes effect, but you could put, put the individuals in place and they would just transition into the rules.
Once it takes effect. So ad hoc.
Mayor, yes.
Yeah, that's, yep. So myself, Councilor Polis, and Councilor Potenon as alternate, alternate.
Since he has authority, you want to just do that, or would you like a motion? It would, well, so by charter, I think that's appointment by the mayor, confirmation by the.
By the council, yeah. So needs motion to approve.
Approve those appointments.
I'll make the motion to approve those appointments.
Motion by Councilor Potenon.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Skengich to approve the appointment of myself, Councilor Polis, and Councilor Potenon to the personnel committee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, none. Motion carries three to zero. And that's all we had for old business. We'll move on to new business, discussion of the city charter and election post on website. So.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, Attorney Lindsay did advise the commission of our options as far as the charter goes in regards to the ordinance or moving it to the election. Um, the members of the charter commission did discuss that, and all agreed that moving it forward to the general election would be the best route for the city and its citizens. As far as how to move forward now, um, in regards to the process, I would refer that back to Attorney Lindsay on where to go from here now that the recommendation has been made.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So I think, um, in reviewing the, uh, the relevant Minnesota statutes and going through the process, there were two options that were available. Uh, it sounds like the charter that the commission is recommending going through the general election, um, the council did receive, so the charter amendment was, was received, so proposed to the council at the last meeting, so we do meet our deadlines, uh, at the seventeen weeks out from the election. Uh, and so really the process would be, um, because that is the, that is the route that's preferred and the seventeen weeks remain, really what I think the action by the council would be, would be just a simple majority motion to authorize and direct the city staff to, uh, take all actions necessary to communicate with the county to make sure that it's incorporated into the ballot for the general election.
You know, it's pretty lengthy. I'm just curious on the cost now for this, this ballot, how much does it increase the cost? I mean, if you're gonna include these, how many pages? Thirty pages and, uh, I'm having trouble, you know, agreeing with, with the charter commission on this. I think I should just go to ordinance, myself personally.
Is my understanding of the charter is more about just a simple, do we adopt it? Yes or no?
So the, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So I think that, that is a correct statement, so there's, there's two issues. Number one, uh, we would frame the, the actual question that would be presented on the ballot, but the secondary issue is, is to ensure that we disseminate enough information so that the public can become sufficiently informed to know what they're voting on. And so that the question could be something as simple, as simple as, uh, should the, should the amendment to the Gilbert City Charter be adopted? Yes or no? But we have to, we have to be able to disseminate enough information, have copies available, so that folks can, and even as, as late as at the polling place, can look at it to see if they agree with it or not.
We did have a public set here, the, all of the commissioners here, who had promised aside for the public to come down, get a copy of the charter, to look at and view, ask questions, maybe, and there was no waiting attendance. So we did give the public that opportunity to review the charter and ask questions in regards to changes that we recommended.
As long as it doesn't have to be the full on the ballot.
Right.
And that's what I was concerned about. I mean, if you just have a copy of it available to anybody, and that's fine, that's legal and great, yeah.
Right, yeah. I think, uh, uh, Clerk Skirbich had a great, a great idea, put it up on the website and make sure at the polling places we've got two or three copies available that folks could, could borrow, review, and return. Probably be.
Yeah, the easiest way to.
And maybe just notice to the public that we could have a copy available at City Hall if somebody wanted to come in and do it.
Right.
Prior to, yeah. Yep, so tonight we can make that motion to.
Basically, it would just be to authorize and direct the city staff to, uh, take act, to.
Take action to get it.
Get it to the.
To the ballot.
You got that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on that, then.
Motion by Councilor Skengich to direct city staff to take the necessary measures to get the city charter on the ballot for election this year.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Potenon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay, none. Motion carries three to zero. I want to personally thank the committee for, Charter Board, for the work you put into correcting it, or not correcting it, just updating it, taking your time to look at it, and meeting the time you, you gave the city. Thank you.
Same also. Thank you for putting a lot of time into it.
Yeah, me too, thanks.
And resolution 2024, Patch 18, accepting donation from Approved Plumbing in the amount of $1,892.90.
I'll make that motion to accept.
Motion by Councilor Potenon.
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Skengich to approve the acceptance of the donation of $1,892.90 from Approved Plumbing, uh, donation for the purchase of the fire truck. Any further discussion?
I've got just one thing. Didn't we have a donation from him already?
Yeah.
He did. He's been making quarterly donations as a percentage of his retail sales.
Okay, I thought he was doing it in one whole.
No.
Correct, okay. All right, that's all I have.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay, none. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Approved Plumbing. And did we have anything, any miscellaneous? Anything we missed?
I've got one thing I thought of, quick. Uh, the old fire truck, ladder truck. Do we want to get that declared excess and get that on an auction site somewhere and get rid of it before the weather?
Too much, yeah.
Well, yeah, if it's, it's, I mean, it's, outside's not good, and is it inside now? I don't even know.
Uh, we had it outside for the crawl, we'll put it back in the garage, and then we take it outside for the winter. But yeah, I know, uh, I know you guys directed me a couple months ago, or whatever, month ago or something like that, to look into like Minbid or whatnot. I tried contacting the guy down at Minbid with a phone call, with an email, no calls back. Um, St. Louis County, I haven't had time to do that one, but, I mean, I just, I, you know, so, and I don't know why, if I'm going to the wrong person, but I'm just right on Minbid, Minbid website, there's a phone number to call for that, and that's what I've called a couple times now, so no calls back. But I don't know if you guys just want to go to a local, like Do Bid, or like, uh, like.
Do Bid got around.
Two Rivers Auction, or whatnot, you know.
Could check, I guess, just either one of them. I know when that FWD, the fifty-eight, when I, when I had that put on, that to Do Bid, there were people down in this, well, a lady from down in the cities actually bought it. So it got around, and just myself.
Advertisement alone is.
Just putting it out there. There's, uh, some fire groups down towards the cities that have a lot of connections all over. They're always looking for things like that, especially that vintage. So I would think either that West Two Rivers or Do Bid, if you want to try the county.
Try the county, I mean, if I can put on the agenda for next week anyways.
Yeah, it's got to be declared.
See what I can do, um, if I can talk to the county, see what it takes. Um, but at least we'll talk about it, then we can either go to Do Bid or Two Rivers. Do Bid's probably your biggest auction site around here. Unless you go, there's a cave-in to the Pirata, the Grand Rapids or cave-in area.
I can't remember.
I think Do Bid is probably one of the, you know, the most seen auction sites, that's, you know.
Didn't we give the approval to put it on bids quite a while ago?
We never declared it.
Never declared it, but had them look into it.
You just have to look into it.
Yeah.
Say, I called them, and I've been waiting for your back, and nothing, like, two emails or whatever, and nothing.
So there's probably people waiting. I tried to talk to a few people down in the cities, uh, especially the lady that had bought the, our old fire, really old fire truck. Uh, she's in a kind of a group with a bunch of people that collect fire trucks. So I mean, I, what we're gonna get for it, that FWD, I think, went for like fifty-five hundred bucks. So if we get between five to ten thousand, I think.
It's better than just sitting down there collecting dust and riding.
Yeah, and I mean, if there's a, it, it's a perfectly good engine with a fifty-foot, uh, elevated stream with a ladder on it, if there's an outlying fire department, that would work amazing for it.
Tongue shift.
Anybody that doesn't want to spend a lot, it'd be, uh, an excellent piece of equipment, diesel, automatic, what does it have, eight thousand miles on it?
Well, yeah.
I just wanted to throw that out there. Before the snow flies, we gotta get.
Yeah, get it next, next month, next agenda.
Put it on the next agenda.
Then, then I'll find out, and we'll, we'll get some direction on whether it's Do Bid or it's safe with the county. I would do it for them.
Perfect. Anything further? Any other miscellaneous? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Skengich.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Potenon to adjourn our city council meeting at 7:31 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay, none. Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.